It's six o'clock. I'll call this regular session of the Greenville City Council to order let the record reflect at six o'clock this evening and we'll ask Pastor Phil Paul Blue to come through, not Phil, to give the invocation. Thank you for being here tonight.
Those also that are just in attendance that have business to be done, we thank you for your goodness to us. We thank you for Jesus and I pray this in His name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the praise of the nations. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. I'd like to ask Judge Stovall to come forward and issue the oath of office to Philip Spencer for place three and Tim Cruz for place four, who were recently elected. Yeah, well, I don't know if he wants to do, I don't know if he can do two at once.
I'll do, I'll do one at a time. That's all right. Raise your right hand. I, Philip R. Spencer, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of city council member place three of the city of Greenville and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God. Good Lord. Raise your right hand. I, Tim Cruz, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of city council member place four of the city of Greenville and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God.
Yeah.
Raise your right hand. I, Tim Cruz, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of city council member place four of the city of Greenville and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God.
Those also that are just in attendance that have business to be done, we thank you for your goodness to us. We thank you for Jesus and I pray this in His name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the praise of the nations.
Praise the nations.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. I'd like to ask Judge Stovall to come forward and issue the oath of office to Philip Spencer for place three and Tim Cruz for place four, who were recently elected. Yeah, well, I don't know if he wants to do, I don't know if he can do two at once.
I'll do, I'll do one at a time. That's all right. Raise your right hand. I, Philip R. Spencer, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of city council member place three of the city of Greenville and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you. Now, this is a presentation by GFOA. It's going to make this presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm just going to go ahead and talk about the two GFOA awards that we received. And I think we have the, we do. Also, yeah, I'll let you come up now and I'll talk about as well. So GFOA is the governing body that kind of, they kind of set the standards for our budget award and our financial reporting process. And every fiscal year, we put in to receive awards for the distinguished budget award as well as the award in excellence for our ACFR, which is in our certified audited financial report. And we received both of those awards. And then Keith Self reached out and he also decided to also honor us as well with an additional certificate, which we appreciate. So thank you very much. And I believe there's, yes, it'll be this one here.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. And I believe you have another one as well for.
Yes. Is that next?
I think that one's next.
Yeah.
Congressman Keith Self would like to present you with the certificate of congressional recognition to Carla Oldacre, city of Greenville, Texas, for TMCA's Municipal Clerk's Office Achievement of Excellence Award for 2022 and 2023.
Manly, I don't think he said it, but I think we were twenty, there were twenty-four cities out of 528, I think, in Texas that received that award. So, very important. I'll call your attention to two placeholders in the agenda for citizens to be heard and public testimony. Citizens to be heard on items, to address the council on items that are not scheduled for public hearing or otherwise published on the agenda. Public testimony is for items that are on the agenda, starting with item 8A tonight. There are no public hearings, no ordinances. And so if you'd like to address the council on any of these items, please present a citizen comment card to the city secretary. Are there citizens to be heard? Okay.
Betty Monday.
Yes, Betty Monday, 3414 West Marshall Street, Greenville, Texas.
It's six o'clock. I'll call this regular session of the Greenville City Council to order, let the record reflect it's six o'clock this evening and we'll ask Pastor Phil Paul Blue to come through, not Phil, to give the invocation. Thank you for being here tonight.
Those also that are just in attendance that have business to be done, we thank you for your goodness to us. We thank you for Jesus and I pray this in his name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
all. Please be seated. I'd like to ask Judge Stovall to come forward and issue the oath of office to Philip Spencer for place three and Tim Cruz for place four who were recently elected. Yeah, well, I don't know if he wants to do, I don't know if he can do two at once.
I'll do, I'll do one at a time.
Okay.
That's all right. Raise your right hand. I, Philip R. Spencer, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of city council member place three of the city of Greenville and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God. Congratulate you. Good luck. Raise your right hand. I, Tim Cruz,
I, Tim Cruz,
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will faithfully execute
That I will faithfully execute.
the duties of the office
The duties of the office.
of council member place four
Of council member place four.
of the city of Greenville
Of the city of Greenville.
and will to the best of my ability
And will to the best of my ability.
preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend.
the Constitution
The Constitution.
and the laws of the United States
And the laws of the United States.
and of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God. Allows us to honor those who honored, who honored us with their service. And before I started, I'd like all of the audience in the audience to stand, please. I don't know if, I don't know how many are here who'd like to come forward or present this to all of you if you'd like. How about you do that? Well, there's a lot of them. Okay. Well, I'll just do this anyway. I don't, I don't know who it was to be presented to, but, okay, okay. Kenneth, you want to come take this? Come down? Terrence, somebody? Okay. I think this is one of the most important, I guess you might say holidays in our history. I hope we're not losing the so Memorial Day 2023, whereas Monday, May 29th, 2023, in the state of the United States of America, there is one, there are two, there are four, whereas it's May 8th, and we should take this time to express our gratitude to the families of all of our fallen heroes. So therefore, on behalf of the Greenville City Council, we recognize Memorial Day, May 29th, 2023. So, thank all of you for serving.
Thank you.
Turn your right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, this presentation by G P is going like this presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm just going to go ahead and talk about the two GFOA awards that we received. And I think we have the, we do. Awesome. All right. Yeah, I'll let you come up now and I'll talk about it as well. So GFOA is the governing body that kind of, they kind of set the standards for our budget award and our financial reporting process. And every fiscal year, we put in to receive awards for the distinguished, distinguished budget award as well as the award in excellence for our ACFR, which is in our certified audited financial report. And we received both of those awards. And then Keith Self reached out and he also decided to also honor us as well with an additional certificate, which we appreciate. So thank you very much. And I believe there's, yes, it'll be this one here.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. And I believe you have another one as well for
Yes. Is that next?
I think that one's next.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Congressman Keith Self would like to present you with the certificate of congressional recognition to Carla Oldacre, city of Greenville, Texas, for TMCA's Municipal Clerk's Office Achievement of Excellence Award for 2022 and 2023.
Manly, I don't think you said it, but I think we were twenty, there were twenty-four cities out of 528, I think, in, in Texas that received that award. So, yeah, very important. Okay, I'll call your attention to two placeholders in the agenda for citizens to be heard and public testimony. Citizens to be heard on items, to address the council on items that are not scheduled for public hearing or otherwise published on the agenda. Public testimony is for items that are on the agenda, starting with item 8A tonight. There are no public hearings, no ordinances. And so if you'd like to address the council on any of these items, please present a citizen comment, comment card to the city secretary. Are there citizens to be heard? Okay.
Betty Mundy.
Betty Mundy, 3414 West Marshall Street, Greenville, Texas. I'm looking, I'm looking at this council. And I do know that in every election, there is a winner and there is a loser. If a loser loses fairly and squarely, so be it. But what I'm looking at right now, I am not a racist, so don't get, don't get it twisted. But what I'm looking at right now with this council, with the makeup of this council, I see an all-white council, all men. That's not, that's not cool with me. Not at all. I'm reminded of a place that I never thought I'd go, ever go back to. And that's when we were, when we had the sign on the city, I don't know if all of you remember or not, Black is Land, White is People. We've gone back there. In my opinion, we've gone back there. I am not pleased at all. I'm hearing in your community, not in mine, in your community, how seats are being bought and sold. That's not cool. That is not cool. That's not cool at all. Not with me. Not with me. Mr. Freeman, your seat is up next. You will be up next too. So be aware of your surroundings. Be aware of what's going on around you. I appreciate those of you who prayed for me while I was that sick. I appreciate the texts, messages. I appreciate everything. But what I'm looking at, it's not cool. It's not cool with me. I'm coming to every council meeting. Every one of you ran on something. I don't, I don't know what you ran on. Really don't care. But I will be at every meeting to see how you are going to vote. I will be here. I intend to be here at every, at every meeting. Jerry, I've always, I have always supported you. I've always supported you. But I do not like, I just don't like what I'm looking at. I, I, I don't like it. Nobody on that, nobody on this council is representing me. Nobody, nobody on the council is rep, is representing me. Nobody. All men, all white. And I am not a racist. Thank you so very much. But I am not pleased. I would love to see somebody on that council who looks like me. And like I said, I would be here each time, every time. I intend to be here to see how you're going to vote. And I know at every time a vote is taken, there should never, ever be a unanimous vote. There should never be. Somebody should, somebody up there, not, well, from Terry back around to Mr. Freeman, somebody should, should object to something. I don't know what you do when you're in your meetings. I, I don't know what you do when you're in there because we're not privy to what goes on in there. We're not privy to it. So if y'all come out as a united front, so be it. So be it. But this, this, this makeup that I'm looking at, I am not pleased at all.
Robinette Bannister.
Hi, I'm Robinette Bannister, 6920 Sells Street. I know this lady. And I want, and I want to tell you, Mr. Spencer's got some big shoes to fill because I, I worked very closely with Ms. Washington and did appreciate very much how she represented our district. And you and I have spoken already. I'm just one of many in the, in the district, pretty outspoken, but very active in there. So Kristen and I have already talked about still staying in touch and still moving forward. And we're all serving, whether we're sitting in one of your chairs, we still are serving our community. So we haven't lost her. Welcome. I'm excited that you're our councilman and I look forward to working with you. There's some issues we're working on that we're trying to button up. I encourage council members to come out to the city park in the evenings as the sun's going down and see the aggressive driving that's going on in the parking lots. It is chipping up our parking lots. Okay? We're looking at a big parks and rec package coming that all of us want so badly to happen. We need to get this under control so we don't have to fix what's already there. So the money that we do invest in this is going to be for going forward. Lights at the entrance would be very helpful so the cameras can pick up who's coming and going out of the park if there's an issue that is to happen, maybe. I know the petition passed, but I've been speaking with a lot of people that are in the parks personally. I've been talking with seniors and people that are disabled. There are so many people that are very excited about this project. I'm not losing heart. I hope you won't, you know, lose heart either because it's very well needed, not just for our city, our county. It's needed in the region. And people that I've spoken to from Texarkana up to the Red River to Dallas, lots of people are very excited about this project coming. We know it's a big, it's a big ticket item, but that's what we're going to need to fill the needs there. I don't guess there's anything else. I want to thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Bates.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, city staff, and those that are in attendance. I'm here today to speak my mind on the recreation center project, the sports center, because I think it's really important. And I don't think that maybe everyone understands the ramifications of what happens if we have to have a referendum election on this project. I can't count the number of times that I've heard people say that they would go to Reese Davis, but there's no room. And that's, that's been going on for several years now. So I'm real excited to see that on a list of the projects. When I ask myself, why do we need a referendum election? You know, what is it about being free to vote that we need? That's, that the bonds are a concern? I don't get it. Most of the people and most of the things I've heard are positive about this particular issue. I, at least 800 people, 2.7% of our city voted to, or signed up to, to have a referendum election on this issue. I don't understand why. What's the reasoning for it? Where are the facts based on what it is? We have a city council. We have a mayor. We elect these folks. They tend to our city. They help our staffing. We have, our city has minimal staff additional for those that have positions that need help. We do a lot in our city for not as much money as I see going on in other places. I've come to know the process by visiting council for issuing bonds on many issues. And I can't see why this issue is different from any other issue. We issue bonds all the time. And we get things done. And hey, I love Sells Street. Hey, I love Stonewall. Yay. Those were great projects. We have many more that are out there. Do I always agree with your decisions? No, I don't. But I know that, that we've elected you as folks that we expect to be conscientious and do a good job. And that's what I see. It takes a lot of commitment if you don't know and understand how much time, personal time, these folks have to take to do their job and make their decisions. And that's what they're here for. In my experience, council and staff, who are very professional workers, who work hard to make things better for all of us. Why is this sports center so important? If it's about elections, didn't we vote for you guys? You're the ones that are guiding us. You're the ones that made the recommendation. Does, does the citizens need to vote on every single bond? I've never seen that happen in my time that I've been visiting. What happens going forward? BRS, the folks that were awarded the professional services contract for the sports center in February, did a data analysis based on what this delay is going to cost us. And okay, folks, hold on. We'll have an 8% increase to a $65 million bond by waiting six months. Well, what is that? That is only the pieces for construction. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll let, I'll let you, I think this went over all that.
Well, I'm almost at conclusion.
Okay. There you go.
Anyway, that's $5.2 million. So a referendum will cause us to lose this. It will delay, it will delay the citizens. I feel it's become a contrarian issue, a contrarian economic issue, because contrarian thinking involves challenging the prevailing consensus on any particular issue, just to arrive at an independent point of view. I, let's not hold up something positive for our community just to have a contrarian view. You know, let's get out there and find thousands more of the people in this city who want this project. And let's get the sports center going. Let's figure out how we can get this going. Thank you.
Believe me, Ms. Bates, this council is committed to doing that. Thank you for speaking tonight.
Jared, do you think it might be worth responding a little bit to that?
No, we're not allowed to respond. It's just typically, no. Okay. Resolutions. Consider possible action on a resolution of intent to establish the Greenville Pace Program. Daniel.
All right. In your packets, there's some paperwork related to this. This is a two-part deal. The Pace Program.
The Pace Program is set up for commercial buildings.
I'm just going to talk you into the microphone.
Is set up for commercial industrial buildings to use clean energy
Or to get clean energy upgrades and then to pay for those through an assessment, which works sort of like property taxes. We have here tonight, one of the personnel with the group that the city may choose to administer that program. If, and he's here, he has a PowerPoint deck, I believe, that's ready to go. Okay. If you want to come up and introduce yourself, he'll give us a, an overview and you can ask him questions. And then we can talk from there.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Council members, my name's Doug Taylor. I'm with the Texas Pace Authority, Chief Operating Officer there. And I'm going to kind of run through some slides quickly to provide you some background on, on Pace, the Pace Program and how it works. Oops. Can I advance that or can you? Yeah. There we go. Okay. So Pace stands for Property Assess Clean Energy. Mr. Ray mentioned it's a financing tool that can offer long-term, lower interest financing for certain types of energy efficiency, water conservation, water efficiency, and distributed generation projects. This is private financing that's secured by a local assessment on the property that operates sort of like a mortgage. It provides security for a lender to provide a much longer term for the loan than they ordinarily would. It, it acts sort of like a single parcel PID. So an owner would ask that a, the assessment be placed on their property to secure the financing for the improvements, but just for their property so it wouldn't affect any other properties. It's authorized under Local Government Code Chapter 399, which the Texas Pace Act passed 10 years ago. It's local government enabled so cities and counties can elect to set up this program. Voluntary and open market, meaning that any property owner can access it that has an eligible property, any contractor can do the work, any lender can provide the financing. So it's not a, it's sort of a conduit, but it ties together all these different elements. The properties that are eligible are any, any sort of a commercial property, industrial, manufacturing, agriculture, anything that is not single-family residential or residential four units or less. A multifamily can also use it. The types of things that are eligible, any project that can save energy, reduce energy or water usage or demand. Typically, we see lighting, HVC replacements, pumps, motors, that type of thing. Some distributed generation projects as well. Many people are looking at solar and even storage, electricity, storage batteries onsite. So those sorts of things can qualify. So the, the key difference is conventional equipment financing has a typical, has a very short term, probably five years, which means that from a cash flow perspective, your payments are greater than the savings that are accruing on the project that you've just financed. And so you're upside down financially from a, from a owner's perspective. Pace allows you to extend the repayment terms to match the benefits or match the useful life of the project so that those, the costs and the benefits are in alignment throughout the life of the loan. So far across the state, almost 400 million in Pace financing has been closed, mostly in commercial retail, hospitality. About half this is energy efficiency, a third water conservation, and a little bit distributed generation as well. So I mentioned 10 years ago, the legislature passed the Texas Pace Act, which gave the specific authority for cities and counties to establish local Pace programs. Since then, 89 have done this. The latest was just this morning in Angelina County. I was down there. City of Lufkin, they established it countywide. This covers about three quarters of the population. And in this part of the state, the city of Commerce has set up a, a citywide program, Rowlett, Hopkins County, countywide, Paris and Clarksville at the city level, and then Bowie County, as well as several in the metroplex. So the process, and Mr. Ray mentioned this, it's really a two-step process. Number one, a public briefing or discussion, which is what we're doing right now. Second is to post a report on how the program will work. That's in your packet. It's a common structure that's being used by all the cities and counties in the state. The third is to pass a resolution of intent. In that resolution of intent, that's also in your packet, it has a public hearing date, which is the important part, which allows any member of the public to be notified that they can come and present their comments at that public hearing. Then the public hearing is held, which would be per the resolution that's there. And the next, the next meeting, I think on the 13th, is that right, of June? And then at that point, the council can act to establish the program and then also select an administrator to operate the program. So, next. So our role is, we're, we're, we're a Pace administrator. That's all we do. We, we service those now 89 cities and counties. We have no other role in the transaction. We don't provide the funding. We don't do the contracting work. We obviously are not the owners. We serve as extended staff at the city and county to operate the program for them. So the, so there's no, there's no additional need for personnel or, or any kind of financial commitment on behalf of the, the city. So part of the, part of the work we do is make sure that all the projects meet these under, underwriting criteria that are outlined in statute. That is, the savings from the projects are accurate and should materialize over the life. This is verified by a third-party Texas licensed PE. We also make sure that the loan-to-value ratio is in, in check. Pace loan can be up to 25% of the value of the property, but no more. And also, if there is a senior loan or a mortgage on the property, consent from that lender is required. So we make sure all of those things are, are addressed. I won't go through all these steps, but there's really two phases of a Pace project. Number one is to determine whether the project is feasible and Pace is a good fit for it. The owner largely does that with, you know, the owner's contractors and other parties. If it looks like it's a good fit, then it moves to the application phase. And then we, we take over from there and make sure that the project, again, meets all the criteria under state law. Next. So let's look at the types of projects that have been funded, urban and rural, all types, again, nonprofit, hospitality, commercial, energy and water conservation, the smallest 68,000, the largest 40 million. And all of these have received 100% financing. So a couple of examples. This was a abandoned warehouse in Corsecana that was repurposed into a textile manufacturing plant, helping provide 60 new jobs. They replaced the HVC in lighting, which needed to be done to bring this building back into operation. Next. This is a general store in Elgin. They just wanted to add solar to the roof. They were able to secure a USDA grant for part of that. And then Encore offered a utility incentive for that as well. And they financed the balance through Pace. Next. This is a new, one of these multi-screen kind of entertainment complex cinemas that's under construction in Red Oak, just south of Dallas. Here, they went above minimum energy code for everything in the building, which allowed them to utilize Pace for those above code, higher performance options. Next. And this one's downtown Amarillo, an abandoned building that was kind of an ice sword. The city was actually trying to raise money to tear it down. A developer bought it, turned it into a boutique hotel. It's now in operation. It's a beautiful property. And they, they brought back into life, you know, what, what, a building that had great bones, but really needed a lot of other work. And they used Pace for part of that funding. And last, but not least, this is actually the first Pace project in the state. This is a temple in Austin, so houses of worship. Nonprofits can also use Pace. They understandably have cash flow challenges, so Pace can be a good fit for them to upgrade their, their mechanical systems.
What was the $40 million project?
That is a building, it's a hotel in downtown Dallas that is under construction now. And it is similar to the cinema I described. Everything is going way above code. It's a higher performance building. So it's, I forget the name. It's, I think it's a higher-performance building, so it's, I forget the name, I think it's partial Swiss and Texas ownership, but it's right downtown and kind of near the Crescent, all that area.
Okay.
So Pace is a win-win-win, really, for property owners can use this to improve their properties, repurpose properties. For contractors, oftentimes they'll propose a project, but the price tag will cause the owner to faint, this is a way to provide financing to move that project forward. For lenders, any lender can provide the funding, the state benefits through reduced peak demand for power and other ways. And then it's for communities, it's a local economic development tool that does not cost the city any money. So that's, it's a good way to help improve building stock and refurbish and repurpose buildings. So I'll stop there and see what questions there may have.
Any questions? Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, and he's here to answer any other questions. If you don't have any questions, you'll look forward to this, the way that this is drafted, basically this would serve as a date-setting document for the final...
Adoption, which would be three weeks from now on the 13th. And it, I mean, this basically does name his group as the administrator, so if you don't want to do that, and you do want to do an RFP, now is the time to do that. Otherwise, if you adopt this, then on the 13th, the final decision will come forward for the council to vote on it at that time. That's when, and if it's adopted, that's when people can start applying for this. This was, the reason we're talking about this now is this is an important component of the financing that one of the developers here locally is looking for with a very, very large project, and this would help provide some of that financing to make that hotel exceed the normal code requirements, which is a very expensive process.
So are there any questions of Daniel regarding this? There are none. Being none, I'll open this for public testimony. Anyone like to speak either in favor or opposition to this item 8A? Being no one, what is the pleasure of the council regarding this issue? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll move that we approve this resolution that establishes, or that communicates the intent to establish the Greenville Pace Program, naming Texas Pace Authority as the vendor.
Okay. And it passes unanimously. Moving on to 8B, consideration and action on a resolution electing a mayor pro temp to serve one-year term on the city council.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to reelect Terry Thomas for that position.
Motion is second.
I'd like to second that.
Okay, there's a motion is second. Is there public testimony regarding this issue? Anyone want to speak on this? I can't think of any reason anyone why, but I think I have to ask that, so I will. Okay. What is the pleasure? Please vote.
I voted for him.
I think there'd be public testimony on that. Okay, and it passes unanimously, and Terry Thomas will be the mayor pro temp for this coming year. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item 8C, consideration and action on a resolution approving a contract with Heritage Constructors to reestablish connection with stormwater system to reservoir one.
Yes, Mayor, this is a resolution for Heritage. Currently, back, well, I'll give you the background. It used to, our filter wash and our basin wash used to get sent to basin, or to reservoir number one. At some point in the, so they'd go to reservoir one, settle everything out, go to reservoir two, and then we could reuse that water. At some point in the past, past administration decided to reconnect our stormwater to our pond number two, which in essence now makes all the settling out in the sludge go into pond number two. So in order for that to stop and reconnect it back to number one, that would be helpful because then we can continue to use number two. If we continue at this pace, then the sludge will continue to build up, and we won't be able to use it in the future like number one, because number one acts as our drying pond. So what happened, so what we're asking to do is for Heritage, who is already on site, there's no, they wouldn't have to, they're already there because they're working on our filter project, and so what we'd ask them to do is just reconnect that line to number one. And then, our superintendent is also looking for, in for pond number two, in order to get some of that sludge out, some alternative ways. Wet dredging is obviously very, very expensive, so, you know, that is an option, but he's also looking at maybe if there's some kind of fish or something that we could put in there that would help us get rid of some of that sludge, and then we continue to use reservoir in the very distant future for that purpose. So this just reconnects it from number two, so our stormwater no longer goes to number two, and it reconnects it back to number one. And this is at a cost of $96,000.
Question from the council regarding this issue. There being none, I'll open this for public testimony, and would like to speak either in favor or opposition to this item 8C. Being no one, what is the pleasure of the council regarding 8C?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion is second, please vote. And it passes unanimously. Item 8D, consideration and action on a resolution approving the purchase of body-worn camera equipment using state seizure funds. Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. We knew from the onset of our body camera program that we weren't going to have enough on the initial purchase. I initially put in for 15 more body cams in the next budget year. However, we have been very successful in our hiring, so pretty soon, we're going to have more officers in training than we have body cameras for. So we're asking to use $20,000 for the initial purchase of 15 body cameras that we can put into use right away.
And I think when you got here, how many vacancies did we have in the police department?
As late as November, we had 17 vacancies, which was over 25%.
And we filled all of them, but one or two, right?
Yes, sir. I was full for a time last week, but then something happened. I have one vacancy currently, and I have two candidates still that we're processing.
So, congratulations, that's very good, we're happy about that.
Yeah, it was a great team effort, you know, to be honest, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank this council. Y'all have given us the tools that it takes to make this possible. Without the support of the council, Summer, the city manager, we could not have made this happen. It was very easy to go out and sell a product that you believe in. And I believe in City of Greenville, I believe in the Greenville Police Department, it's a great organization. Everybody got together, it was a team effort, and we made great strides over the last seven months.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Smith? Okay, I'll open this up for public testimony, thank you very much. Anyone like to speak either in favor or opposition to this issue? Being no one, I'll close the public testimony. What is the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Okay. Motion and a second, please vote. And it passes unanimously. Item 8E, consideration and action on a resolution authorizing a unit-priced construction contract with Tricon Services.
Yes, Mayor, this would be for Tricon to replace eight intersections within the city. Our engineering department has identified eight pretty critical intersections that are in pretty bad shape, and so it'd be very similar to, we did over spring break, the up-the-grove and Templeton intersection, over there where the buses drive, and there's a lot of traffic and things like that, and so this is a very similar program. We went to the Transportation Subcommittee on April 3rd and discussed it with them, and so they were in favor of us moving forward to do this. Tricon has done work for us in the past, and so it put, we put it out to bid, they were the low bidder at 241-351. After they kind of complete these intersections, these will fit in with, number one, with our street program on some mill and overlay that we're also working on, so you'll see some of that coming in the future. And then also, it'll supplement also with our crews being able to go into, if we can fix the whole intersection, then we can go down and block by block that surrounds that intersection and be able to replace that. If it's to the scope where our guys can take care of it, if not, we'll take care of it with the scope of the street bond money. And so, we're in the process of doing that, and this is kind of that first step of that, so we'd ask that you would approve this, and then we can move forward, and we could get started on this in the next month or two.
Any questions? There are no questions, I'll open this up for public testimony. Anyone like to speak in favor or opposition to this issue? Close the public testimony, what is the pleasure of the council regarding this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion is your second? Motion is second, please vote. And it passes unanimously. Consideration and action on a resolution amending the interlocal agreement with Hunt County for tax increment reinvestment zone number one.
All right, 15 years ago, the city entered into an interlocal agreement with Hunt County, and similarly, did a separate one with the hospital. These two next items, F and G, amend that agreement to make the TERZ zone geographically bigger by eight parcels. The one that was originally in your packet had one added after our meeting last night, that was a small parcel of adjacent Interstate 30. The only thing that this does is to add those eight parcels. There are, this is part of an overall effort that is going to require the approval of, I think, 11 separate documents. Four of those documents are these two, and then their counterparts with the county and with the hospital district. So this morning, I went to the county meeting, and they approved a very similar version, just with the words changed, instead of being City of Greenville doing this, it was Hunt County doing this, but 99% of this was the same wording. They approved it, even though at the TERZ meeting last night, there was a delay call for, they postponed the final action on some of those other portions of the development deal until June 6th. The county went ahead and approved their version of this amendment, subject to the city and the TERZ board approving the rest of the documents. And then I spoke with the hospital's attorney today, and I think that that was their plan as well, although they're meeting currently. So, but basically, if you approve this, the county's already approved their version of 8F, and so if the city approves this side, then that becomes temporarily, it won't become fully final until the TERZ board and then the council approve the rest of the documents. To the extent that that doesn't happen for some reason, then this becomes moot, and those eight additional parcels don't go into the TERZ zone.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, if there are no questions, I'll open this up for public testimony, and would like to speak in favor or opposition to this, item 8F. Since there is no one, I'll close the public testimony. What is the pleasure of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Okay. Motion is your second?
I'll second.
Your second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. And it passes unanimously. Item 8G, consideration and action on a resolution amending the interlocal agreement with Hunt Memorial Hospital District for tax increment reinvestment zone number one. Daniel?
Same thing, this one just hadn't been approved by the hospital yet, it may have by this point, but otherwise, everything still applies from the last one.
If there are no questions, I'll open this up for public testimony. Would like to speak in favor or opposition to this issue? There being no one, I'll close the public testimony. What's the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion?
Second.
And a second, please vote. And it passes unanimously. Item 8H, Daniel?
Well, this one is, we're going to have to wait on this one.
Until the special meeting on May 6th.
June 6th.
June 6th, I'm sorry, yes.
May 6th is going to be long.
Okay, so, we're looking for a motion to table this, I believe, is that correct?
Motion is postponed.
Postpone or table?
Postponed.
Okay, okay, okay. So, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to postpone.
Until, you have to say a specific date.
Until June 6th.
Until June 6th.
June 6th, at an appointed date, we want to say that a time, an appointed time also?
Did we decide?
We did, 9:00 AM on June 6th.
June 6th at 9:00 AM.
Okay. Your second?
Second.
Well, I voted, but... And it passes unanimously. Consideration and action, item 8I, consideration and action on a resolution appointing person to the Greenville Board of Development. And I want to speak on this for just a minute. The Appointments Committee, which is comprised of Councilman Thomas and Councilman Conlins, and I interviewed a number of people, and we found someone who was very, very qualified, Frank Stevenson, and we, unfortunately, there were people that wanted to be reappointed to these boards, and so we didn't have a space for him on a couple of positions, and he's been waiting now for about six months, I think, to be appointed to this, and we finally had a vacancy on the Board of Development, and we're going to appoint Frank Stevenson to this Board of Development position tonight. Ben, I'd like to ask you, or Terry, either one, if you'd like to comment on that also.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll just add that Mr. Stevenson's been very faithful to attend our meetings, and has consistently shown interest in the doings of the city.
Yes, he has.
Has communicated on a number of occasions to us good wisdom about those processes. We've talked about Board of Development before, we've talked about planning and zoning, we've talked about a number of issues, and we think that he would be an outstanding addition to this board, or any of the other ones that we've talked about. So we're, I'm excited to be able to appoint him for this position.
And I as well really appreciate your willingness. I know you went through several interviews with us, you were very patient, and we were looking forward, when the void came up, we were looking forward to seeing him in there. Good to have you on that board.
So, I guess I need to open this up for public testimony, I'm not sure exactly why. Does anyone like to speak in favor or opposition to this issue? There being no one, I'll close the public testimony. Item 8I, what is the pleasure of the council regarding this issue?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second, please vote. Congratulations, Mr. Stevenson. Very happy for you to be on that board, and you have been very dedicated. I don't think you missed a meeting that I remember, so thank you very much. Okay, I'll move on to the consent calendar, I'd like the city secretary to read the consent calendar, please.
City Council, many minutes from May 9th and the special meeting from May 16th. Resolution authorizing tax resale of property for 2406 Pace Street. Consideration and action on a resolution approving the purchase of 41 bullet-resistant shields utilizing grant funds received from the Office of the Governor. Consideration and action on a resolution approving the purchase of a TruNarc handheld narcotics analyzer using grant funds.
Council have any questions on any of these four items? Being none, I will open public testimony, anyone like to speak in favor or opposition to these issue, any of these four issues on the consent calendar? Being no one, what is the pleasure of the council regarding the consent calendar?
Make a motion to accept the consent calendar?
Motion is your second? Motion is your second? And it passes unanimously. Item ten A, March financials. Is GP? Excuse me.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'll be presenting the March financial report for you. Thank you. So as a reminder, through March, we're fifty percent through the fiscal year. For starters, we'll review the general fund revenues and expenses, and again, at this point, fifty percent through the year, that's where we need to be at forty-eight percent of budgeted expectations, and then sixty-five percent of expected collections. Collections are just under twenty million at nineteen point nine, and the reason those are so much higher than the fifty percent is because we collect all of those property taxes. And I think we, through the end of March, we're at ninety-nine percent of collections, so we'll stay a little bit ahead of where we're trending through the calendar year, probably through July, as that tends to flatten out and catch up with the rest of the fiscal year. Our budgeted expenses are just under sixteen million at fifteen point nine. And then again, the biggest pool of that revenue pie is about nine and a half million or forty-eight percent of collections and, and property taxes. The remaining roughly thirty percent is five point six in sales taxes. And then the biggest piece of our expenditures are public safety, just under as well nine point five million dollars at sixty percent. And then is our sales tax years to date, year to date twenty twenty-three through March, our collections are up about a hundred fifty thousand or three percent compared to fiscal year to date twenty-two through March. So kind of as you see that chart that shows our monthly collections going back, you know, the past ten years, you'll see kind of we had those pretty big increases, and then I think we're finally at that leveling off point where we're kind of normalizing now, which is good. So our sales tax target to meet budget is ten point eight million. Actual so far, we're at five point four million, which leaves another five point four left to collect to meet our budget, so we're perfectly on pace for that. And then this is kind of our comparison cities chart. This just shows the current period collections, eight hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars for March twenty twenty-three, which was an increase of about twelve percent compared to March twenty-two. As a reminder, these are collected in January, reported in February, and then collected by March. If you're looking up there at Cleburne, I thought that was kind of weird too, and I Googled it. And the reason Cleburne for this month is so much higher, they received a one point five million dollar sales tax collection for March, so that's kind of why their chart is shot up so high. I couldn't figure out why they received that, but I'd be interested to know, because it must be a nice surprise to get a one point five million lump payment like that. This shows that net payment received by the city the past, I believe that's almost a ten-year trend as well. And then again, you can see we had those huge jumps from twenty-one to twenty-two, twenty-two to twenty-three. And then this is a review of our water and sewer revenues through March. We're at nine point eight million or fifty-one percent of budgeted expectations, which again is right where we need to be, fifty percent through the year. And then going down top to bottom, that top chart is going to be for your water revenues. The second's going to be your wastewater revenues, and then other fees charged in sales to make up that total amount on your bottom of that nine point eight million. And then this is the hotel motel occupancy tax review. This one kind of has a story as well, because, you know, per the words at the bottom, you'll see it came in at forty-seven point seven thousand, which was a decrease of thirty-two percent compared to March of twenty-two. Now, when I looked into that, you'll kind of see the three different trends there of the green lines twenty twenty-one, the red is twenty-one twenty-two, and blue is twenty-two twenty-three. So you'll see the blue graph this year kind of spiked back down to green. So I think something must have happened last year, because the year before, we were at about forty-five thousand as well. Then it kind of shot up to seventy-five thousand and then dropped back down to forty-five. So I don't know if there was something going on last March that would have caused a lot of hotel activity that month. I couldn't think of anything off the top of my head, but it's not a huge drop or anything like that. And then an additional fact of this chart for this year, if you'll remember, in February, I explained why we shot up so high on the blue, is because we received two months of collections that were not paid last year. So it kind of looks like there was this huge drop off, but really, it's kind of that compounding effect of, you know, we shot up because of multiple collections last month, and then it looks like a thirty percent drop for March twenty-two, but really, I think it was just a one-time annual event that caused us to shoot up so high. And then, so again, kind of tracking back to where I was originally going, for the year, our average monthly revenue is just above sixty-five thousand, which is an increase of four percent from this same point last fiscal year. So overall, we're doing about five percent higher than last year. Overall, pretty good at fifty point through, fifty percent through the year overall financially. And I think we're in a good place as we enter budget season and close out the year. So does anybody have any questions? Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
We had talked about a couple of days ago about comparison cities and making the sales tax.
Mm-hmm.
Were you prepared to do something about it in the near future?
Yes. So me and Summer had looked at it, and really, as far as like our comparison cities in the Dallas-Fort Worth area, we felt the same, this group of cities is still pretty comparable. We tried to search around us for other data points as far as, you know, kind of like you said, sales tax is one of the primary drivers, but other things too, as far as distance from the metroplex, population size, TAV value for the city. And we, we still think that that's a pretty good group of comparison cities. I don't know if you have anything else to add, Summer, but we did look at it, and we didn't feel that, yeah, we couldn't find anything to change it to from, and we feel like that's still a pretty solid group to compare to. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Monthly status report, Summer?
All right, thank you, Mayor. This is going to be through the month of April. So if you look at Waste Connections, down from March, so that's good news. Complaints have kind of been, I think, about steady about that one fifty mark since we named the, the new contractor. So I think there are some areas that, you know, maybe, but they're still working with us. GP had a meeting with them, I think, last week, one day last week. So they're still communicating with us and those kind of things, and so, and anything we can help with the transition, we're working with them. So all that's still going as planned. Utility cuts were about the same as last month. This is our contractor utility cuts, so those are the, the bigger ones that our, our crews can't necessarily handle. So those bigger ones, there was about thirteen of those in the month of April. Potholes, they did about a hundred and twelve potholes, and those are any from the smaller ones to the smaller utility cuts, our crews can do that. So they really worked pretty well for the month of April. I don't know that we'll ever get caught up, but street sweeping, there was only thirty-one miles done for the month of April. The street sweeper was broke down and in the shop, so that's the reason that that went from three hundred twenty-five miles down to thirty-one miles. So that, you should see that shoot back up next month. Downtown, obviously, not right now is being swept because Tech Dot's doing all their road work in the downtown area, so that's not being, for, and for this month especially for May, that won't happen. The mowed areas, they've mowed them all about eighty percent. We had have some, we had have some rain during the month of April, the beginning of May as well, so, but the rain, I think, has slowed down a little bit. We're still being able to use our boom mower in certain places, so our guys are trying to keep up as much as they possibly can. The grass, well, grass and weeds, I should say, is growing pretty quickly at this point with the weather getting better, so. But at this point, I talked to our street superintendent, and we're at least at this point keeping up. Line of sight, same deal. About fifteen intersections were cleared, so they clear those on a, well, this time of year, more than a once, once a month basis, but they try to get to hit to everything. Parks and Recreation also clears line of sight in certain areas that Tech Dot does not, so that it's safe to, you know, certain sections, intersections that you could see around. So we're still working through all those. Signs replaced, they had about thirty-four signs replaced. I apologize, it's hard to see with that yellow. Thirty-four signs were replaced. That includes anything that was down or anything that was new for new subdivisions and things like that. There's requests coming in all the time for those with those new subdivisions being, building permits being pulled at this point, so those are going in pretty quickly. We had about forty-five building permits issued, so we're still on good track there. We don't see anything slowing down. And then we issued six certificates of occupancy, and so that's still going in the right direction. So I think a couple of weeks ago, when I talked to our community development director, he was like, yeah, I don't know what it's going to do, da-da-da. And then the last staff meeting, he was very optimistic about everything, and everything's just continuing to go faster and faster and still being built. So their people are just, his office is still very, very busy. So I feel pretty confident about the, you know, the building and all that, the permits that are being pulled and development and those kind of things. So he's very optimistic about that. Raw water line, we're about at the same place. Design phase about ninety-five percent. We're still working through the easements and that, that process. We've purchased, we did have a meeting two weeks ago with our pipe broker, and he had very good news that hopefully by the end of this year, which would be quarter four, we'd be able to go to those pipe extruders and have them start building that pipe for us. And he thinks it can be, he said the market's kind of lowering and it's leveling off, so he thinks we can get a very competitive price. So he's very optimistic about that. Obviously, nothing's written in stone, but he feels that they can really broker a great deal for that raw water line, and we'll be right on budget where we need to be, and our timeline will stay on as well. So we're very optimistic about the, the raw water line and getting that replaced as soon as we can get that pipe built. So we're looking at, we're looking at, obviously, the clearing of that line and getting it prepared. So we, you guys may be seeing something coming to you guys in the next couple of months. If we can get that bit out and get that all cleared and prepared, so that by, by the time the pipe is done, we're just installing it and moving forward as fast as we possibly can. So we're in a good spot for the raw water line. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Item ten C is Recreation Center Bond Election. I think everybody knows what's going on there. Item eleven, City Council Discussion of Proposed Agenda Items. Are there any, any discussion on the, on that issue? There being none, I'll move on to Board and Commission Minutes, which you have before you. Keep Greenville Beautiful Quarterly Report and Greenville Board of Development Minutes from those dates listed. Executive Session, we are making a decision out of executive session tonight, and I'd ask Daniel Ray to brief the city council and the audience on that issue.
All right. At the last meeting, the council voted to direct me to file a lawsuit against one of the two hotels that are adjacent to McDonald's at the corner of Holden and I-30. This tonight was of consideration is another proposed lawsuit, this time against the Express Hotel, which used to be the Holiday Inn, it's one with the hanger bar in it. This, I passed out the pleading, post-pleading earlier. This hotel actually has quite a bit more crime than the one that was seen two weeks ago. This, otherwise would follow the same filing path, which we would file tomorrow morning, the lawsuit, and ask for a hearing as soon as we can get it served and answered, and then set up a hearing date for a temporary injunction that would require action on the part of the owners to address themselves, the problems with serious crime at that hotel property. And so I can answer any questions, but to the extent that someone makes, wants to make a motion, it would be a motion to direct the city attorney's office to file a lawsuit on behalf of the city against Hunt County Hospitality LLC, also known as the Express and its suites. And the real property number is twelve fifteen I-30 Greenville, Texas, seven five four oh two, Engham. Visit Chandra Hotel, Jarmesh Hotel, and Timir Kumar Hotel, individual private business owner.
Sure.
Nope. You spoke first.
I would like to make a motion. Daniel, do I need to redo the whole?
No. Give me the stage.
I would like to make a motion based on your recommendation to order a lawsuit against Hospitality LLC.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote. And it passes unanimously. That is, that concludes our meeting tonight. Thank you for coming, and we'll see you next time, hopefully. Thank you very much.